Okay, I'm sure he'll join.
The Zoom count, the Zoom count has been upgraded.
Yep.
How many we have? Well, good, we have a lot of people.
Yeah, 121 total, 14 panelists and 109 members of the public and.
It's going up.
Climbing, yes.
Climbing, that's good.
I think we're trending on Twitter.
Well, we're glad you're all here.
Welcome.
All right, I don't see Peter. Okay, I'll just, why don't I just start?
No, Peter's here. He is as an attendee for some reason.
Oh.
He's here.
Saw his chat. That's gonna be hard for the voting.
I'll put him up to you and promote him.
Chatting in his votes.
While you're doing that, I'm gonna start. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequencha, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Pack and the Times on January 9th, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard discussion list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Order Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the procedures are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A388.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative and district-wide staff-only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Mr. Bolden, would you take the roll call, please?
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the minutes for the July 14th, 2020 meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Betsy, second, Brian, any discussion? If none, Mr. Bolden, could we have a vote?
Yes, Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item is the harassment, intimidation and bullying, which is a consent item. And then the next item is F1 President's Comments. And for that, I will just welcome everyone to this meeting tonight. I would like to note that it may be summertime, but we are quite busy as everyone can imagine. And I want to comment on a few things, but just let everyone know we do have tentatively another meeting scheduled in August. The next one will be August 11th. There's a tentative meeting. If we need it, we probably will. And then our following meeting will be August 25th. So we will continue meeting full steam through the summer. And we note that the Zooms will be on the calendar. We also will have a few committee meetings in there also, which mostly will be discussing the restart. And I just want to say that tonight we will be talking about the emergency restructuring of pretty much everything we know about how we deliver education to our students due to the pandemic. And we are doing, trying to do that in a way that protects the health and safety and prioritizes that of our students, staff and the community. Our administration and our administrators, our staff and a select group of our educators have been working pretty much 24/7 over the last few weeks. And to come up with this plan in accordance with all of the regulatory requirements, and we'll hear more about that. But I just want to express our gratitude to the work that is being put into this planning. In particular, Dr. Galasso and Dr. Ginsburg have been putting in an extraordinary effort and have spoken, I believe, to over 500 parents and educators and community members this week alone with respect to this planning. And we are just very grateful to them and also to our staff and to our parents and community for their engagement and their patience and their flexibility as we all try to deal with this very extraordinary unprecedented situation. We also tonight will be talking about steps that we are taking to dismantle the individual, institutional and structural racism that exists in our school district and our community. We know that words are not enough and we are guided as ever by equity. It is one of our fundamental principles. But we are going to take action and we are going to continue taking action and we want to do better. So that is some of the things we will talk about tonight and in upcoming weeks. And the third main thing I wanted to say is we are now looking forward. We are, we are dealing with the present emergency and all of the stresses that we are feeling. But we are looking ahead and we are embarking on the search for our permanent superintendent to lead us into the future, which is a really a major initiative for this board. It's one of the most important jobs that we have. And to lead us through that and talk about where we are, I want to turn it over to Betsy Baglio.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce the next agenda item to our community. Over the past few months, the Board of Education has been engaged in the identification of a search firm to partner with the Princeton Public Schools in our search for a permanent superintendent. We are all grateful for Dr. Galasso's leadership this year and are then working to identify a new superintendent for our schools for July 1st, 2021. I've worked with my colleagues Beth Baron, Debbie Bronfeld, Dan Dart and Daphne Kendall on the search committee. We've researched search firms throughout the country and held interviews with search firms on Zoom that were noticed so the entire board could attend. Most board members have had two opportunities to hear from Kevin O'Mara from Search Exec Connect and connect and a number of us called references over the last two weeks. It is with enthusiasm that the search committee unanimously recommends that the board awards this contract. School Exec Connect, which is based outside of Chicago, Illinois, brings us decades of experience with public school searches. Kevin, who is the president of School Exec Connect, will be our lead consultant and will work closely with the Board of Education throughout this search. Kevin joined our first interview well versed in the benefits and challenges that we face here in Princeton and he's energetic and eager to help us name the next superintendent of our district. Kevin will lead us in building a candidate profile and will engage focus groups comprised of all constituents in the coming months. School Exec Connect presents two slates of candidates to their boards of education, a semifinal slate of seven or eight and a final slate of three. Much of this search will be done on Zoom, although we hope we will be able to meet candidates, the final candidates in person. Finally, Kevin understands that our board is seeking to launch a national search to identify a diverse group of candidates, keeping in mind our mission to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative and compassionate citizens of a global society. We're looking forward to finding an innovative leader to help us sustain and advance our mission on behalf of our students, staff and families. And we believe that we have found the right partner in School Exec Connect. So now I think we need a motion.
Yes, thank you, Becky. Can we have a motion to approve the resolution in F2 to appoint Executive Connect as our executive search firm for the superintendent search? Daphna, you have a second? Betsy, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Can we have a roll call, please? Sorry, let's do a roll call.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder. Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Kevin O'Mara, would you like to, we'd like to welcome you and would you like to say a few words to our, our community and our board?
Oh, I am so, so pleased to be here and so pleased that the board has shown the faith to hire our firm to help in this partnership moving forward. I know you have many, many, many challenges. This is just another one that I'm happy to partner with you to meet. Betsy said almost everything I was gonna say, so she stole everything, so I apologize. As Betsy described and, and has been outlined on Kevin O'Mara, I'm the president of School Exec Connect. We were founded in 2004. We performed over 400 searches across the United States. We're dedicated to a diversity attentive process. Over 60% of our placements last year were women minorities or both. We have over 60 consultants in our, on our team that are reflective of that attention to diversity. We have many women and minority professionals on our team. I'm excited to start the search process soon. Our firm is built on the concepts of transparency and inclusivity, which mirror the priorities of the Board of Education. We will meet with a wide variety of Princeton focus groups, most likely via Zoom, and post a custom survey to ensure we get your opinions and what you're looking for in your next leader. The exact number of focus groups will be decided by the Board of Education when we meet for our initial planning meeting. The purpose of these focus groups in the survey is to create a profile of the ideal candidate. We will talk about the many great things that the Princeton schools have going on and we will also speak about the challenges that exist for continued growth towards the mission of the school. I've gotten to know the Board of Education over the past few months. They've been very thorough. I know their priority is to hear from the entire community and get your opinions on what traits, experiences and background for the next superintendent are essential to you. They want a slate of diverse candidates to choose from and will work tirelessly to ensure that the fundamental concepts of transparency and inclusivity are held. If the board accepts my recommendation, they will also include community members, teachers, staff and administrators in the interviews of the finalist slate of candidates. I will work with the district personnel to create a dedicated webpage on the district's website to clearly inform the public on the search progress. This communication will be updated frequently to share what we are doing and where we are in the search process. We will also share our progress through social media and other district community communication methods. Princeton is a wonderful community with an outstanding school system. You have one of the best school districts in the nation and you undoubtedly will have many exceptional candidates from which to choose your next leader. Once posted by the district, the webpage will have my email address so that anyone can contact me at any time with questions or suggestions. The more community members I speak with, the better the candidate profile that will result. Again, I'm excited to partner with the Princeton School District Community and looking forward to this critical process. I hope you're all safe and healthy, as are your families. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Mara. We appreciate it.
Just one thing, I don't, so I just wanted to add that Kevin is also a superintendent and we did do a national search for our search firm. And so while Kevin has not performed any searches in New Jersey, he's not yet aware that the community is not involved in interviewing finalists. But we're very excited to work with you, Kevin. You're out of the box and we know you'll find us someone exceptional. So thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Daphne. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Daphne. Well, thank you, Kevin. If you'd like to listen to more of this, our meeting, you're welcome. Turn your screen off, because here we go.
Thanks.
Dr. Galasso?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Kevin, welcome aboard. If I can be of any assistance, please feel free to reach out to me.
I know your reputation and I will certainly be reaching out to you. I know you have your man's fault.
Well, thank you for that. I was gonna call you and ask you to help me with the reentry plan. So, you know, if you're not doing anything later.
Good luck. I really wish you the best of luck. It's, it's so tough.
Well, well, thank you. And anything I can do to assist you, I'm more than happy to do. So great to meet you, Kevin. Take care. Superintendent's comments. Beth mentioned that we have engaged over 500 parents and faculty members this, this week, and I just want to say thank you. A number of our board members have put me in touch with medical people and they have taken the time out of their busy schedules to look at our preliminary plan and to review some of the health and safety factors that we put into our plan. And their comments were really very helpful and they are being incorporated into our final plan. So I just want to say thank you to all the medical professionals who took the time to help us. In addition to that, we had over 500 emails from parents and community, faculty members, staff. I just want to say thank you. Most of them were so thoughtful and, and really have provided us some interesting ideas on, and solutions to some of the things that we were wrestling with. So from a, from a administrative standpoint, I just want to say thank you. We will be continuing to engage you over the course of time. I wanted to make mention also that the, Beth mentioned about equity and literacy plan. I have been meeting with, with different groups in the community and the board has agreed with me to honor the work that has been done the last few years, but to move into a direction of actionable, deliverable kinds of activities. So for example, I'm just gonna mention a, a couple of things that the board has, has given me permission to move forward with, and that is a pre-K K1 equity and literacy program to be implemented this September. And I have two of our staff members who are going to be leading that initiative. Over the next month, the community will see a number of deliverables and actionable items that we will be putting in place for this September and the following September. So I wanted to make mention of that tonight as we move forward. The restart plan, which is unfortunately a large document, is on our website. And I know it's difficult to get through all the, all the individual pieces, but I would be remiss if I didn't say a special thanks to the entire administrative staff. You're very, very fortunate in Princeton to have dedicated individuals, both from the teaching staff and the administrative staff. Anything I've asked, Saturday, Sunday, doesn't make any difference. They're willing to be engaged and to work so that, as a compliment to all of you and the community for hiring great people for me to work with. So I'm not sure exactly how we're going to proceed tonight with regard to going through that plan, but I do have to have it submitted preliminarily to the county superintendent on the 3rd of August, and that's why it's being approved tonight. But the board, I've also indicated to the board, there will be minor adjustments as we move forward. As you can see, there's guidance and there's direction coming from every angle, almost every single morning. So we're going to have to make our final decisions based on the data points that I've spoken about. We now have a pretty good idea about our teaching staff and support staff coming back to work and those seeking accommodations. In the next day or so, our, our final parent survey will be going out to the community and hopefully parents will be able then to take a look at our reentry plan and make a decision about full remote hybrid. And so that we can determine the type of assets that we have to put into place to meet the needs of the kids in the various models that we're presenting. So in addition to that, we're also asking parents, every Thursday we send out a transportation waiver. This transportation waiver is extremely important. As you know, we have to social distance in order to get the youngsters into school. And one of the difficulties with that is if parents are, are going to indicate that they are willing to transport their youngsters, that will make it easier for us to social distance on our, our, our 50-some bus routes that we run each and every single day. So I, I want to, I want to say this clearly, that if you signed a waiver and your work situation or family situation changes, we're not going to hold you to that waiver. We will, we will work with you to make sure your youngster gets to school. So I just wanted to share that with you. We're in this together. This is a team plan. This is the Princeton community teaming up with the administrative staff to provide the healthiest and safest reentry for both our students and our staff. So this is, this is, this, this is a team effort. This is not the administrative or the Board of Education's plan. This is a team effort. Over the next three or four weeks, we plan to continually engage through Zoom and other activities. I hope to have a, a two-hour or three-hour forum with our staff, probably in the first week in August, when we finally get all the data points completed. I want to offer that opportunity. We now have 500 people who can go on a Zoom. Well, we'll, we'll engage that many people at once if we need to. I know there's also a calendar adjustment. I want to make sure that the public realizes that we're backloading the, the calendar a little bit because we heard you and you want to, you want to make sure that the instructional process and program is in place for September. So we're taking seven days to work with our talented staff to build the best curriculum, delivery system that we possibly can and, and making sure that all of our staff are comfortable with our learning management system so that we can then deliver a different type of instruction in the event that we're forced to go remote and, and hybrid. But we want to make sure that we're, that the standards and expectations are met. And we heard the parents indicate some of the things that they thought we could do a little bit better and our teaching staff recognizes that. You know, to, to turn on a dime on March 13th, really remarkable what they achieved. But they recognized that this work is hard to do at remote and even in a hybrid situation. So we'll have an opportunity now for seven days to build an educational program that I think will be acceptable and hopefully more than that to the community if we have to make a pivot. So one thing on the calendar, Election Day, you will see that we took that away. That will be in the event, and again, we're not sure if the voting is going to be by mail or if the voting is going to be a combination of, of mail and in-person. If there's a combination of, if there's in-person voting, that will be a remote day. So I wanted to make sure that parents felt comfortable. We're not going to have a lot of people coming into our schools with our kids. In the event that it's, that it's live voting, we will, we will go remote. I'll stop there, Beth, and, and you know, if there are questions, I can, you know, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Did you want to mention about the FAQs and how parents could ask questions?
Hey, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Parents have been, been asking questions and we've been responding to as many as we possibly can. So on our website tonight, you will see that the PHS, the, the high school, has an FAQ for parents and also JW has, has its FAQ. There will be an entry FAQ in the next few days that will be up on our website. It'll be a rolling FAQ. So as you're sending questions into us, we will have people both at the high school, middle school and at the elementary level who will be answering parents' questions in, in, in pretty much a rolling FAQ. Thank you for reminding me.
Daphna?
So Barry, thanks to you and your staff for this comprehensive, long report. I know you were trying to get to 100 pages, but I know next time. So I just have a couple of questions. I only finished reading it today at 5 o'clock, so forgive me. I don't expect you to have answers now, but just some things I wanted to ask. So Fridays from 8:30 to 1, it's what happens? It's not clear to me. Is that a day of instruction? Is that a reading day? Some, on one page?
Which level are you talking about, Daphna? Is it? Are you talking about junior high school?
I'm talking about 6 through 12.
Okay, 6 through 12. So, so Friday would be a remote day. It would be a remote day for everyone, right? And the instruction would take place 8:30 to 1 and they'll be, the teachers will be engaging all hybrid, they'll be engaging cohort A, B and remote learners.
Okay.
Remote learners. So it will be an instructional day. But if we're able to be in, it'll also be a planning day for teachers. So in other words, they'll be able to be, be doing instruction, but the day ends at 3:21, so it'll also be an opportunity to plan. And I know Bob is on the, on, on the call also. So Bob, if you want to clarify anything I just said, please do.
Well, I just wanted to add that the planning is necessary just to make sure that we're taking advantage of what we learn as we go forward and, and discard things if some of the things we've put in place don't work. But also that time from 1 o'clock to 3:21 on Fridays and the time from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock on Wednesdays for the elementary schools, we're also going to be using for professional development and, and other things so we can in fact keep upgrading the teachers, having them use some of the time for planning and some of the time for professional development throughout the year.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, so thank you. My next question, with regard to special education, there weren't a lot of specifics and I would just wonder, will, and I guess this is more the elementary K through five where we have resource room and, and all those other services. How, how does that look or do you know yet?
Well, we want to meet with the special education parents, but Mickey and her staff have asked for about another week because they're, they're actually contacting parents and seeing who's coming remote, who's going to be in place. So they've asked another week for us to then finalize the special education instructional plan and then we will meet with the special education parent group, probably, probably looking about the 10th, 12th of August, somewhere in that, somewhere in that timeframe.
Okay, then my next question is elementary.
Can I add something? The elementary principals and Eric Solak, who's the, the pre-K to five special ed superiors, and I met today so we could look at the possibility of, well, let me say, first of all, it looks like there's going to be a bunch of parents of special ed youngsters who plan to do all remote. We had a SAC meeting in June when we heard from a lot of parents and it seemed that almost all the parents wanted in-person schooling for their kids. But we've since, since found out that there's a whole bunch of people who weren't at that meeting or didn't speak up at that meeting who actually want the alternative. So we've been working on new models and one of the things we're looking at is bringing, even though at the elementary level, we'll have cohort A coming in Monday and Tuesday and cohort B coming in Thursday and Friday. We were talking today about bringing in, for example, the, the Resource Center children Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday so they can have in-person instruction all four of those days because they are among our more vulnerable learners. So we're, we're evolving that plan as we go, as we get more data. And that, that's why Barry was saying, it changes day to day and we're trying to do the best we can with the newest data that we have.
So, so this is not a fixed plan. So that goes into my next question, which is elementary with, you know, the one, two, Wednesday off and then Thursday, Friday. So we've read studies, articles, Beth sent one to some of us this morning, that the need for deep cleaning isn't as important for this disease because it's airborne. And I, I'm, I'm wondering if it's determined later on, I don't know how much credence we can give to CDC guidance, but if, will we ever come to a conclusion that Wednesday would be an in-school day?
So I can tell you two things. One, first of all, just in terms of CDC guidance, we made the decision as administrative team that we're going with the first set of CDC guidelines because we didn't want political pressure to ease up and have us ease up on things. So we're still going with the original guidelines with CDC. Secondly, the, the Wednesday evolved partly because of cleaning and partly because of we needed time for people to co-plan. For example, if we're trying to get teachers who are teaching remotely and teachers who are teaching in person, we needed time for them to get together to be able to plan and integrate what they're doing together. But also what has evolved is if we have to go suddenly to a remote setting, we actually wanted everybody to get into a routine of what a, a typical day would be. So if we have everybody, and that goes for, for the older kids too, but from, if they're going from 8:30 to 1 o'clock, totally remote on Wednesdays, everybody's getting into the routines, the expectations, the norms of what a particular day like that would look like. So if we have to pivot, everybody already knows what they're doing. So we thought that would, was actually a, a good model to use as well, just to train everybody for that.
Okay, thank you. And my last question has to do with the cohort A, B and C. So there's concern from parents, I'm sure you've seen it, about the, the C cohort, the ones that choose to remain at home all the time. How will they be actively engaged with their peers?
We're going to defer on that answer for this reason. We don't have the data points to see how many kids are actually going to be in that cohort. Once we get those data points, then we'll be able to answer that particular question. Also, whether or not we're going to have the faculty and the certifications to teach a remote, a remote piece and how that works. So until those data points are established, Daphna, it's impossible to, to tell you how we would incorporate A, B and C. But we, we, we've, we've heard from parents, there, there seems to be a, a theme regarding cohort C. Bob and I have discussed it, but I think we're both in agreement. And until we get those data points and see what we're talking about as far as the numbers of kids, then we can figure out how to incorporate them into the other cohorts.
Okay, but parents?
One of those data points is getting information now from parents and we're finishing up this, the draft of our survey. There, we have two parents who have survey backgrounds, so they've been helping us create it. Tomorrow, it's being translated into Spanish, so we'll get it out either late tomorrow or certainly by Thursday. And we'd like all parents to respond quickly so that we in fact can move forward with knowing how many kids are going to be in which cohorts. And that goes for K through 12, pre-K through 12. So please look for that and please respond as quickly as you can.
Well, thank you, Bob. And I just want to say, it's hard to believe you've been in this job less than a month too and you're just, we tell Barry all the time what a great job he's doing, but you really are doing a tremendous job and we really, we know it's a lot of hours and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Barry, can I just ask a process question? You're going to take questions now from the board on the plan. And do you, are we, do you need us to take a vote? the board on the plan. And do you, are we, do you need us to take a vote on the plan tonight?
Yes, we do. We do. We need, we need preliminary approval to send it to the county, executive county superintendent.
And when, when will we do that? Will we do that after the public comment or will we do that now? Just curious.
I, I think you could probably do it, you could probably do it anytime during the agenda, but I, you know, you may want to hear from the public on the agenda. Although we were not going to be able to have a dialogue because, you know, we've had the dialogue with the members of the public. We now have put the plan together. As I indicated to you, there probably is going to be some adjustments in special ed. There may be even adjustments in elementary with, with the feeding that we're anticipating. Minor changes, any major changes, say, for example, if the governor came out tomorrow and said, well, we're going to delay and everybody's totally remote until October, then we'd have to come back to the board and then have to have the whole plan re-approved at that point. But minor changes we'll be able to make. So I think it would be appropriate for the board to vote on the restart and reopening plan now, and then we'll have, you know, the public is invited to comment on, on it.
Okay. All right. So maybe we can have the board just continue. We have questions. I know I have, I have one, but does anyone else have some other questions they'd like to ask at this point? Yes?
I had one question that, which is just sort of jumps off of, Daphne asked most of my questions. So thank you, Daphne. I, I do want to say again, thank you so much for all of the work. I love how Fridays have been articulated. Even through the middle school, there's a schedule where teachers are meeting, I think with each cohort for 30 minutes. There's great engagement. High school, there was less specifics. And so I just thought, might that be a time for counselors to check in, peer group to happen? So just, and we don't need an answer now, but I just think as we think about high school and how to, you know, continue to engage our kids, certainly they need reading time, but I think the reaching out and the connection with, with the adults in the school is really important as well. So-
I agree with you. And I think that's one of the things we learned from the remote experience in the spring. The more contact time, the more we can build an instructional assistance into the, into the remote learning and so forth and so on. All that is going to strengthen the social and emotional piece, which I think is so important. You know, also, if we, we're, the fact we're going to be able to run our clubs and activities from a remote standpoint, that also provides that social and emotional. You know, we'll ask the high school people to maybe make a little more detail with regard to the, to that Friday engagement.
Great. Thank you.
So Beth, just in terms of process, I think it's important that we're here for the public before we vote on the plan.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I saw that chat. That's, I think we're fine with that. We can do the public comment and then we can vote right before we do our policies. That's, I think, Matt, is that all right on the process? You're on mute. Yep.
Perfect. We'll make it H2 on the agenda.
H2, yep. Great. Thank you. Another board questions, Debbie?
Yeah, so it is very, very detailed. So I, that is wonderful for people. There was something in there about parents would check on their kids' systems, symptoms, and take their temperature every morning.
It was a pre-assessment document that we hope to run through our learning management system, Deb. So in other words, what we're asking mom and dad to do prior to youngsters coming to school, you know, there are certain, there's going to be a questionnaire. We'll provide that questionnaire. And then when the youngster gets to school, we're still, you know, even though CDC, as Bob said, is now saying temperature checks aren't necessary and so forth and so on, we have purchased the things that we need to do, the temperature checks. We're going to do the screening as kids come into the, into school. So we're also having a pre-screening for, for our faculty and staff. So this way, we're doing pre-screening, we're doing temperature checks at the buildings, and, you know, we're, we're hoping that offers a little bit of protection against somebody coming to work who may work and or school who shouldn't be.
So I had one more thing to go on that. Have we also spoke with the town and the university and, and for our parents too, that if they're on vacation, they need to come back, you know, maybe 14 days before school because that's where these breakouts are coming. And then I don't know if the town health people can speak with the university to say, I don't know what they're doing when all their students show up from all over the country and, and maybe all over the world. Are they in a 14-day? Because they go to Starbucks once and then, you know, a parent goes with their kid and-
Okay, Debbie-
I'm just curious about the town.
Debbie, in the, in the survey, actually, on the first page of the survey, there's a note to parents noting that there is that 14-day issue if you're, if, and a lot of people in Princeton tend to go on vacation, one of the parents suggested this to us, towards the end of August. So there is something that tells them if they're not back by August 31st, there's a link to the New Jersey Department so they can see if they've traveled to one of the states because that's, that's being updated daily. And if they have, then it gives them direction. They actually have to opt to the, to the remote learning until they're past their quarantine date, and then if they want, they can change to being hybrid in-person and remote. But there's a, a comment about that already in the survey.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. And then I don't know if we can work with the town and see what the university is doing too, but I, I love that with the parents. Thank you.
Ms. Cantor, you had a comment?
Question, which you may not be able to answer fully, but if someone tests positive, are you, before school starts, going to have a protocol for how that cohort would be handled? What the procedures will be? Because I think some parents were feeling, you know, uncomfortable or confused, like what are the metrics for what happens in a school, in a classroom, and how we deal with someone that might have a positive test?
Susan, did I understand your question to say that prior to the beginning of school?
Well, just so they know what the procedures will be, not that they actually test positive, but as we start, someone along the way might test positive. So know what would happen should either a teacher, a student, someone else test positive.
Yeah, we pretty much, I think, have outlined that in the Mercer County Health Department's appendix because we're going to, we're going to work with them and follow their guidance on contact tracing. All of our nurses will be our contact tracers. They either have been working with the Department of Health since last March and we're taking the courses now through Johns Hopkins so that they will do the contact tracing and then we will be informing parents and students based on what we can divulge according to the County Health Department.
Okay. Yeah, I assume you'll be working closely, and I assume there'll be a metric for the county if the case ties to a certain level that we might have to go remote.
Actually, in that, in that document, there's actually different levels of, of what you're, what you're actually addressing now. So there, there are different contacts. There's also different quarantine periods, so forth and so on. That's, that's in that document. And we decided to adopt that and put it in place because it'll be for the entire county. And it makes more sense because we not only share borders with other school districts, we share employees. Some of the employees live in other districts. In other words, we, we thought it would be, it makes more sense for us to take a county protocol for all of us to agree to do that.
So, so all the schools in the county will be-
Pretty much Mercer County are going to be following the guidelines set forth by the Mercer County Department of Health.
Okay, that's helpful for everyone to hear.
Other other board members?
I, I have a question. If, a lot can happen between now and, and September when schools are actually reopened in terms of COVID-19. And, and what is the plan of if, you know, either the virus gets, gets worse in, in New Jersey or things get better? And do we have a plan for, for both contingencies?
Well, we have a plan for the, for athletics. We will make a decision on August 14th. NJSIAA is supposed to come out with some guidance regarding that. Our athletic director has a, a complete plan to, I'm hearing some feedback, a complete plan for re-entry of, of, of our sports program, if that is indeed what we're going to do. There's also some conversation, Dan, to be quite honest with you, that they're going to follow, that there could be some recommendation to follow the Ivy League model, and that would be, fall sports would be held, but they would be held in January in 10-week seasons. In other words, they would push everything back until January. So I, it's a little early for us to determine exactly what's going to happen with athletics. Most of the school districts in Mercer County have done conditioning pieces, which we are doing remotely, but no one has, to my knowledge, no one has started practicing or, or doing anything else. And our plan is to wait till the 14th and then determine where to go.
Thank you.
Are there any other board questions? If there aren't more board questions, I would make a suggestion that we might have, oh, Brian, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
It's just a second process question. I, I agree, it's very important to hear from the public before we make a decision. Based on what we hear, will we have an opportunity to have a, a second round of questions for Barry?
Well, I would, I would suggest perhaps that we would have, and Matt, tell me if this is permissible, we would amend our agenda to add an additional public comment, maybe now on this item in particular, because we have a very large audience, and I'm not sure what people are here, which items they're here for. But maybe we could have just comment on this agenda item only and then proceed with the vote or maybe discussion and vote on this item. Does that make sense?
Yes, I agree.
Almost there on the agenda anyway. We only have the calendar, then public comment is there, then we added H2 as the board authorization of the re-entry plan.
I'm just suggesting that public comment might be on a multiple different issues.
You want to have a public comment now on just-
Yeah, just have a single focus public comment and then have another one. Would that be?
Sure.
Make sense? Okay. So I, I think we would open it up now to public comment on this item only, on the question of the restart and reopening plan. And again, as Dr. Galasso mentioned, it's not necessarily a Q and A. We have other processes for hearing from the public and answering. In this, in this context, we're going to listen. We, we ask everyone keeps their comments to three minutes. State your name and your address, and please be mindful, there's, there may be many people who would like to comment, so please be respectful and try to allow everyone time. So can we do that, Mr. Bolden?
Sure. Catherine Yee?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Catherine Yeh, and I live at 5 Sheffield Way in Newtown, Pennsylvania. I am an employee of the district, and I want to thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with you tonight. I would like to speak from two different perspectives. I'm addressing you as an occupational therapist who has served this district in all 19 years, and also as the identical twin sister of an extremely healthy, relatively young, marathon-running teacher who is currently living with the aftermath of this virus as one of the third least survivors. On March 11th, I received a call from my mother. She said that she thought my sister had COVID. One of my sister's coworkers and friends had been in contact with someone who tested positive. The coworker and mutual friend were each in the hospital. The coworker was waiting for her test results, and my sister was on the way to the emergency room with 103-degree fever and a terrible cough. My mother explained to my, explained that my sister and her friends, who at the time did not have any symptoms and was unaware she had been in contact with someone who had COVID, had gone to a movie together over the weekend. As my sister had no symptoms at all, up until the point when she spiked that fever, she had gone to work for three days. Subsequently, multiple teachers in that school tested positive. My sister's friend wound up bouncing in and out of the hospital, and one of their mutual friends passed away at the age of 49 after spending weeks in the ICU. My sister lucked out, spending only five days in the hospital. However, to this day, she is suffering from shortness of breath, headaches, and other lingering symptoms. I mean this as a cautionary tale of the danger of asymptomatic spread of this virus. What I would like to offer as a longtime employee of this district is a clearer understanding of the nature of our jobs as related service providers and how limited we are in our capacity for social distancing by the nature of these jobs. Sure, there's a general statement that some jobs require more PPE than others, but what does that look like? Is there an understanding that some of us work literally hand over hand with children of all ages and varying abilities to help them learn the skills that they need to be independent in their school and daily living? Do you know that there are people in this district who routinely assist in our, our youngest students in the bathroom, as they may not be able to do this independently yet? Is there an understanding of what PPE would be needed for these individual specific jobs and a plan for procuring it as PPE is at a shortage nationally? Is there an understanding that PPE needs to be available because of the very real possibility of asymptomatic spread and the fact that any routine screening is not going to identify those people who are pre- or asymptomatic? How are we keeping those staff members who are seeing students across classrooms and buildings such as our related service providers not only safe themselves but from cross-contaminating students and classrooms? I have attended so many meetings this week that my head is spinning, but I have yet to hear the answers to these questions. I was hoping to see the answers in the plan before this meeting and therefore not have to speak at all. However, this, the plan was only sent to us around noon today. I was only able to briefly read through it. Is this the first time you are all seeing it? If so, how can you vote on something so complex without time to digest it and ask questions? I know that this plan needs to be submitted to the state by next week, but that should not be a reason for rubber stamping something. If it is possible, please make sure that every precaution is possibly taken, every precaution possible is taken, and that you account for each individual position and its unique set of needs. I do not want to see our students and staff so needlessly exposed. Also, if these necessary precautions should not be taken or should fail, please consider how you will protect yourselves as board members, the administration, and your staff from being held liable and legally responsible should a student, staff, person, or community member become infected with this virus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ben Samara?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I wanted to speak still during this first part because Dr. Galasso had mentioned some stuff about athletics. And the coaches asked myself and Patricia Mounthart, who's going to speak after me, to talk a little bit about coaching, athletic coaching. So my name is Ben Samara. I'm the school counselor at Riverside, head boys track and field coach at PHS. For what it's worth, I consider both full-time jobs. You know, we understand these are difficult times, but we truly want the board to hear the perspective of the coaches and our student athletes as we wait for a decision on our status for the current year. Throughout the comments tonight, we frequently heard the words communication and connection. This is the main reason the coaches are asking that the board reconsider its wait-and-see approach towards athletics, which we have been informed includes the potential of not even hiring coaches for this year if there's no in-person competitive season. The view seems to be that if we're virtual or if the NJSIAA cancels the competitive portion of our season, that the district's coaches aren't worth compensating to work with their student athletes. I'm especially troubled by this, this approach, given the statement we received from the board and superintendent Cochran last spring. During these unprecedented times, Mr. Cochran wrote, "When schools are physically closed and remote learning has been implemented to reduce the spread of a global pandemic, we feel it's especially important for our students to still be engaged in the sports and activities they love and to feel connected to their teammates, their classmates, their coaches and advisors. We're grateful to all of you currently serving as a coach or an advisor. Thank you for finding creative ways to instruct, inspire, and support our students. We are glad to continue to provide your stipends." And that was from last spring. Last spring's statement did not mention games or the NJ, NJSIAA, nor should it have. "High school sports are so much more than competition, as our athletes saw last year." Just a few months after this initial statement, though, as the school year approaches, our district's coaches and athletes are in limbo, wondering about our status. I've talked to several coaches who frankly are, are hurt, simply can't understand why our work continually does not seem to be appreciated when push comes to shove. I have to say, in 2018, the Princeton track team had the pleasure of coming before the board to celebrate winning our first group championship in 36 years. Many of those present, were present then, and acknowledged that such an enormous success would not be possible if not for the tireless effort of coaches both in and out of season, that a coach's work is year-round. Those validating statements couldn't be more true. And we hear words like that a lot, but now, however, you know, we feel like it's time to turn those words into action to show that they really mean something. We're asking that you commit to hiring and paying district coaches their full stipends in good faith, in recognition of the amazing work they do year-round, understanding that we're in the midst of a unique and terrible situation. Each spring, the fall, winter, and spring athletic coaches are hired for the following year and beginning each summer in good faith to the district and to the athletes. Coaches put in hundreds of hours during the offseason, coordinating with athletes and parents, writing recommendations, completing preseason scheduling requirements, so much more. The work's done outside of our contracted seasons without a peep in terms of additional compensation. And, you know, we feel when we refuse to hire our coaches in the midst of a global pandemic, we're essentially telling them that this extra work means nothing. And we're telling our athletes that the only thing that really matters is competition, wins, losses. And I truly don't believe that the board or our administration feels that way, but that's the message that we're sending. So as a counselor and a coach, you know, So as a counselor and a coach, you know, I understand the tremendous social-emotional impact that athletics can have, even virtually. When our schools moved to remote learning last spring, coaches shifted to remote coaching as well, providing virtual workouts, holding Zoom meetings, conferencing one-on-one. We kept in constant-
Mr. Samara, what you're saying is super important. We've got a ton of people here tonight, so if you could wrap your comments up, it would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, man. The bottom line is this: the work of classroom teachers during remote learning is valuable and worthy of pay. The work of instructional assistants during remote learning is valuable, worthy of pay. And the work of coaches during remote learning is valuable and worthy of pay. The field of play is an extension of the classroom, even virtually. So we're just asking you to please move to hire all fall, winter, and spring coaches together, as you do each year, to allow us to begin the important work of supporting our teams, whether that's in-person or virtual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Manhart?
Hi, I'm Patty Manhart. I'm a teacher in the social studies department at Princeton High School, and this fall will be my eighth year as the girls' head volleyball coach. And I don't want to take up too much time from the community members who'd like to speak tonight, but I would like to thank and echo Coach Samara for his statements. I'm here for sort of the same reason. It was even sort of brought up tonight earlier in this meeting, that we want to focus on students' social-emotional well-being, and think about what are some more ways that we can connect, you know, with our high school students beyond just the classroom. And so, you know, obviously athletics is a big piece of that. I'm also considering or thinking about, you know, our mission to develop the whole child and not just the athlete. The athletics mission statement for Princeton High School is that our commitment is to prepare our student athletes to lead lives of joy and purpose, to foster their development of knowledge and character, to promote a sense of pride within our community, and a sense of achievement among our teams. So it's been difficult being in this holding pattern. All of my coaching colleagues have been doing so much work in the offseason. It's just, and these are all the values that we'd also like to support and uphold. It just becomes difficult when our futures are so uncertain. I was also looking at coaching evaluations, and we have been asked to do a lot of things that take place off the field, like promote character and citizenship, ensure equity and access, which I'm thinking about, you know, we could do even better if we are remote, worst-case scenario. And then the last piece is to ensure the social-emotional health of every student, which I hope we have the opportunity to do sort of in any situation this fall. And so just kind of bringing it back to my team specifically, I have six rising seniors who have been with the Princeton High School volleyball program since their freshman year. They mean so much to me, and I'm not going to stop caring about these students, even if, you know, we don't have a traditional season. But my ability to support those student athletes and all of our student athletes would be so much easier if coaches are also reciprocally supported by the Board of Education and Administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne? Can you turn the volume up a little? I'm having a hard time hearing.
She's muted, Matt.
Yep.
Hello?
There we go.
You hear me?
Yes.
Oh. I also work for the district, and also a Princeton resident. And I have a lot of concern about how we reopen for all the children's safety, but most important, the staff. For me personally, my husband had been sick for the last six months, and doing well his home. We've been home. And for me to go back into the district to work with the children that I work with, who parents will send them to school, I don't want to know, are you really thinking about my safety and the safety of my family with the district? I know we need to move forward. I work always, I work already, all throughout the district, and also the community. I'm all over here, but I also have to make sure I can come home and make sure my family is safe. And I see how, I mean, you put a nice thing together, and like she said, we got this, I got the paper at 12:20, somewhere, something like that, because I was working with kids. I was still working with kids. And I heard with 120-something pages. So I didn't go through the whole, all the pages. You know, I think Princeton can do a better job to make sure everyone is safe. Our children, making sure their parents are accommodated as well, but also the staff that work with these children. I have, I work with children that love, want to, matter what, are they going to keep their mask on all day long? Are we going to really, every staff that walk in the building, you're going to make sure you check their temperature every morning, and every student? To make sure that, you know, this don't continue. What we are doing right now, learning something new, especially me, learning something new, zooming, and still carrying out our curriculum for the district. It should be okay, and to make, so we make sure that everyone is safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Teresa? Teresa Cross?
All right. I think, yeah, there we go. Hi, I'm Teresa Cross. I'm the media specialist at Littlebrook School. And first, I wanted to thank the admin and the Board of Ed members for, like, many people probably don't realize that Board of Ed members are volunteers. Yeah, thinking that you're volunteering for this during a pandemic, best volunteer job ever, right? I'm sure. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I get it, and this is my job. I just have two quick things. And they really have to do with the plan, and not so much the safety in the plan, but I'm still scratching my head after being in this field for 26 years, going, yeah, how's the actual education going to happen in this? Because, so here's an example. I was in Staples the other day, buying back-to-school supplies for my library, you know, just in case, because I want to be prepared. And the cashier said, we both have masks on, and she said, that'll be 2616. I'm like, what? I thought she said 2060. I handed her $20, I said, no, 20. So we had this exchange, because I couldn't figure out what she was saying, because it was so close, and she couldn't figure out, like, why I couldn't figure out, and the register didn't have a number. And I'm like, yeah, I mean, we thought it was funny, but again, she's not the soft-spoken student sitting 12 to 18 feet away from the teacher. And I'm just sitting there going, this is all safe, but I don't know. I think there's going to be, it's going to be near, not near impossible, because teachers are amazingly creative. And that is my second point. But how are they going to be heard? Because removing the masks is not okay. I mean, if anything, we're hearing more and more, the masks, we got to wear the mask. So we're not pulling down the mask to project our voice. No, 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 no. Plexiglass, I see people putting out, no, Plexiglass is, that doesn't say you no longer need to wear a mask. And shields, if it's airborne, shields, no, that doesn't do it either. So we need to figure out a way to get these to actually teach. And that leads to my second point, and that was the Summer Institute. And I really, I want to, again, thank the people for working hard on the Summer Institute. It's very clear, it's concise, it's easy to follow. I signed up for Canvas, and I have my plan for how I'm going to work on that, and, you know, really get this going. I'm excited. I can start as of August 3rd for that. And the equity in there, and there are zero tools for teaching in August. I'm looking, like there's a plan, and I run, I'm like, wait a minute, aren't we missing something here? And when I sent an email, the reply I got was, well, you'll be getting that in September. We want people to really digest Canvas. I can start Canvas August 3rd. I need some things. We need to know how to assess online. I mean, we're going to have people who are going to choose full remote, and we also need to be prepared to pivot, to call an audible, to all of a sudden say, whoops, we got to go and do this, and we need to do it well, because this is at March, and the parents expect us to do it well. So I'm just asking if maybe that plan for August for teaching the Summer Institute, if that can be revised, so that we can get some tools in there for teachers, like, you know, online libraries, how to flip your classroom, how to assess kids. Okay, I mean, if you want to survey the teachers to ask them what they need, not so much safety-wise, but educationally for teaching online, that might be a really good survey. And I know I'm probably-
Excuse me, Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Hi. Your time is up. We've got a ton of people who would like to talk, so if you could complete your comments, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, and that's really, and I know it means asking the people to change the plan for August. And if you think that's hard, think about what all the teachers had to do in March. So it's not, I think, it's not an unreasonable request, and we're just asking for teaching tools. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Matt, you're muted. Lori Weir?
Um, hello?
Hello.
Hello. Hi, I'm Lori Weir. I live at 212 Stewart Road East. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing. I do recognize that you're volunteers, and it never ceases to amaze me how much work you put in. So there's that. Second, I want to echo, actually, all of the things I've heard so far. Everybody's incredibly reasonable and saying really powerful things. And then the main reason I wanted to call in for my part was just regarding athletics. I have two daughters. They both play field hockey, they both play lacrosse, and they both just rely so much on their sports for their physical, their mental, their social well-being in every aspect, in every way. And it was really hard in spring, but we all know that, you know, obviously, there were bigger fish to fry, and this is, you know, a very serious situation. But now, at this point, I think it's really important that the district, you know, moves forward to the best of its ability. I didn't understand early on in the call, the reference to, our districts may not follow NJSI, the NJSI guidelines, it may follow the Ivy League. I had not heard that until this call, and I thought I was really up to date on the issues. So I'm curious how, why, and who would decide that, because that's sort of news, because colleges operate under very different circumstances than secondary schools and, you know, middle schools and high schools do. People don't have to live together and travel far and all, stay in hotels and all these other things. So I think it's incredibly different, and so I just am curious about that. And I just also wanted to say that, and I wrote this in a letter today to the board, but just that private club sports have been playing, they are allowed to be playing, and they take all sorts of precautions, and they're expensive. And so if our school district doesn't, and in our county, whatever, doesn't make publicly available, you know, public school sports available, then this equity divide that we talk about, inequities specifically, will just be so much worse, because the only way to play the sports kids love and practice will be through private, expensive clubs. And that's currently the situation, as far as I know. So I think a lot of attention should be placed on the, there are ways to do these things safely, and it's happening now privately. So I just want to urge the school system to, you know, work as hard as it can to, well, one, hire the coaches, as the coaches were saying, agree to pay them, because they're working hard all the time, and let the kids play and practice as safely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Bigioni?
Good evening, everyone. So I was looking, oh, by the way, I'm Jen Bigioni. I'm the librarian at the high school. I'm also part of this scheduling committee, so that's part of what I wanted to speak about. Reading through the first half of the plan and skimming through the other half, I do notice a schedule that you have here for the high school, which isn't the last version that I saw. So I don't know if something went back to an earlier version, or if this plan just doesn't have the most recent version of the schedule. The last I saw, we had integrated homeroom into a community period in PE, and the PE teachers felt that they had the kinds of background to be able to handle that kind of community period, and it took away passing times and more contact with newer teachers. So you might want to just double-check that something didn't happen in the last day without Jessica letting me know, but that looks like an old plan. The other is that, as I was reading, there were lots of things like, this may, you know, if a visitor comes to the school without a mask, they may be asked to leave. Like, no, I want them to not be allowed in the building. I thought a lot of the language was way too soft for my comfort level. Another aspect that I saw was, you know, it talks about PPE fairly generally. In the last meeting that I was in, it definitely looked like we were going to be getting N95s and shields and Plexiglass, and the N95 is nowhere to be found in the plan. And personally, I would really like to hold our district to that, because without N95s, I will be kicking and screaming not coming into the building. And so I think that's something that we really need to consider. I also didn't see any mention of tents, and I know that we're really looking for outside. So again, I'd like to hold the district responsible for providing the kinds of things that are making us feel like it's a little bit more feasible to enter into the building. Another thing you brought up, the Fridays, that's something that we debated a lot about. And ultimately, we felt that it would be important for the cohorts to be able to work on a level playing field on Friday. On, you know, we're really at the high school planning on project-based learning, and felt that Friday would be the days that students would be able to get together and do that group work, and also let the teachers get their, you know, teachers are going to have to plan in ways that they've never had to plan before. You pretty much have an entire district that's like a first-year teacher. And so it was a way of getting the students to do their work that they need to do, and also getting the teachers to do the work that they need to do. So it wasn't, it's not a free day. It's a well-planned-out day that just looks a little different. And it would be where the only day where all three cohorts would all be remote together. So that was something that was very specifically reasoned out. I think that's all I have to say. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Soon. Sun? Thank you, Sun?
Can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Fang Chu Sun. I'm a parent in a school district. And I first, you know, I thanks everyone. I reviewed your proposal, initial proposal. It's a very pragmatic and very considerate plan. It's basics, the hybrid plans plus remote learning, and takes various concerns into planning. So it's a tremendous work for everyone in the school, including teachers, schools, and students and parents, you know, truly appreciate all the effort. So, you know, a few points I want to make. One is that COVID-19 is an unfortunate event, but we as a community have to cope with it, and do not let it continue to alter our life significantly, right after six months of the event. So at this moment, I think the world has accumulated a lot of lessons learned, either from other country or from other places. And the focus, you know, should take all the precautionary procedures and remediate the expected risk. So that's one thing. So I think we are, you know, on the track of doing that. And I heard a lot of exciting news of consulting medical experts, et cetera. So, and the nature of this, you know, disruption is so unprecedented, you know, we have to be humble enough and tell ourselves that we don't know everything, right? Likely something will fall into cracks. So then, if that happens, then we will take scientific approach to handle those accidents. So then, if that happens, then we will take scientific approach to handle those accidents with prepared and cool minds. So we should not be too much of a professionalist that stop us from seeing big pictures. That's one thing, right? You know, so anything you're doing, I think is to the best. We should not, you know, too harsh on ourselves. So the third, the fourth, last one is that, this is an effort all towns folks, right? So we're all in. You know, is our safety, you know, health, you know, it should be all considered, to make everyone's, you know, every component in the societies, you know, feel comfortable to stand back, you know, to go back to work and send back to kids to the school. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jennifer Simon?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jen Simon, I am a special education teacher at JW, and I'm also the parent of a soon-to-be second grader at Little Brook. And I haven't had a chance to fully review the 100-plus pages of the document, since it was only shared with staff a little at quarter after 11:00 today, but I just did want to take a minute to share how completely demoralized the district's actions have left me feeling recently. Staff were told that the initial plan would be shared at the July 14th board meeting, which is why there were so many of us in attendance at that meeting, and then to be told that we were spectators who didn't need to be on the call was very insulting. And then we were, after that, we were told that the full plan should be shared with staff members, hopefully Saturday, maybe Monday. And then imagine my surprise today when I logged onto Facebook and I saw that the JWPTO had shared the plan publicly on Facebook almost an hour before the district decided to share it with staff members. I know that you all have these unimaginable hurdles that you're trying to take care of right now to keep everybody safe, but I just wanted to say that it's very frustrating to be told repeatedly that we are all on a team together, and that teachers need to trust the team, and that you have our best interests at heart, but then we are told that we're, you know, we're treated as an inconvenience in some of these discussions, and that an afterthought when the information is shared. And it just leaves me thinking, what we try to teach our students is that, you know, actions speak louder than words, and it might seem like a little thing, but we're all in this together, and it would be nice if we were treated as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Tangen?
Yes, thank you. And Rob Tangen, a parent in the district, 66 Shady Brook Lane, I got one in high school, going into high school, one going in middle school. I wanted to second very quickly the mention by an earlier speaker of how wishy-washy the language is in the plan. The fine feature on acrobat tells me the word "may" appears 102 times in 102 pages, so. But more importantly to me is, is I think the plan is missing a big chunk on what happens when a teacher gets sick. There's actually one bullet in the entire plan that says you'll have certified substitutes. There's no mention of how those substitutes are going to get trained to the same level of awareness and discipline that the teachers obviously should need to be. And that's greatly concerning, because I think there's a high likelihood the teachers are going to be out, and there needs to be a robust plan for substitutes. I do thank the people that put this plan together, I understand how hard it is, I do, I have other concerns about it, but I won't take any more time, that was my main two points.
Thank you, Rob. Pete Calhoun?
It's Paul Callahan, thank you for taking my call. Mine is going back to the athletics, and my son is a sophomore, going to be a sophomore this year playing football. And my concern is that if we don't, we don't get the football season going and get it in this fall, the football team is tenuous at best. Coach Calhoun's done a great job recruiting students to play the game. It takes a lot of students to make a team up, and my concern is that if we don't start moving forward, there's already teams practicing, we're going to fall behind, and if we don't have a season, it could mean the end of football at PHS, and with that, you lose the cheerleading team, it's just, it would be a domino effect. So again, just want to voice my concern about making sure we're looking at this as a future, that if we lose football this year, there could be repercussions down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Keisha Smith-Carrington?
Good evening. I was just listening, and I wanted to just make sure to, I don't know how, whether or not this is appropriate, but I wanted to respond to a comment that was made regarding the professional development in the beginning of the year. I have, I'm pretty tech-savvy, I can do a lot of things with technology, I can teach myself how to use different tools, and have done that consistently for two decades or more. And I will tell you that I need to have concerted time to sit and go through the modules in order to do Canvas. I'm very excited about what Canvas has because of the fact that the engagement that we'll be able to have with students is at such a heightened level compared to what we were able to do before. To be able to do polls and get formative assessment data, to be able to have conversations with students, and then see their screen, and do all kinds of things, that some of which we could do in Zoom, but some of which, because people were responding to a crisis, they didn't necessarily have the skills to be able to do it. So, you know, from classroom to classroom, it really depended on the teacher, and what skillset they brought into the situation, and it was a crisis. So going into next year, I know that one of the biggest pieces for us as a community, because of course there were teachers that were part of the reentry planning committees, as well as administrators, and consistently, our conversation was about preparing the teachers to be able to successfully implement digital pedagogy, to know how to use the tools so that learning occurred. And so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the message was really clear, that this has been responsive to needs of teachers, and it is also very needed at this time, because the ways that the six hours of PD are going to occur, teachers are going to be able to get the technological muscle built, so that when September comes and we begin to actually build those modules that we'll need, should we have to pivot, and we begin to learn how to use some of the other technology that is going to be part of instruction for varying reasons, it will be a situation where they won't be learning something on Monday, and then they have to use it the following Monday. Teachers who take advantage of it over the summer will have time to not only learn to use it, but to spend almost a month before they have students in front of them, which will give those teachers a huge asset when it comes to having the level of comfort that you need to be able to be in front of your students and execute something well. So again, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, for anyone who had those concerns, that they know that there is a reason that the PD for technology has been crafted as it has, and also that, you know, at this point, there are several of us as supervisors in the elementary level in particular, who are the core supervisors, who are working to make sure that we can implement the PD in a manner that will make it as seamless as possible. So, you know, again, we are really working hard to be responsive, and I know that it's a, I can only imagine the level of fear that there might be about being ready for when the students come in, but I know that having lived through what we experienced in the spring, and knowing the plan that's in place to prepare us for our children in the fall, I really do feel comfortable with saying that the skills that they need, they're going to be getting in those six hours, and that it's a wise way for us to spend our time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha.
JWMS Communication?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, it's Kim Marks, I'm 327 Snowden Lane. And I just wanted to first say thank you very, very much to everyone involved and everyone commenting. There's a lot of care and compassion and passion for everything, and threading the needle here is not easy. I have been privy to a number of conversations from parents with feedback, and so I just wanted to make a couple points. One, there is great concern that when the parent survey goes out, parents will not yet have enough information to be able to make the choice of which they want. And I know that it's a catch-22, that you're waiting for information from the parents on what they're choosing in order to build out the robust plan. But parents are not comfortable with the information they have in order to make a decision. Two, regardless of what happens, we need to have a very robust remote plan for all learners. We will find ourselves in situations where those who were supposed to be in the classroom will have to be home, whether the entire district is closed or just a classroom, and so there's concern that the synchronous learning and the robust remote learning really needs to be built out. And I know that there's a great dedication of time to that in the beginning of the year, but I just wanted to reiterate that that's a really, really big concern. And third, the equity for not all, I know we've gone to one-to-one, and I think that that's going to help tremendously, but that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone can get online at the same time. People may not have enough bandwidth for everyone in the household to be online at the same time. So in addition to the synchronous learning, we need to have other times for people to be able to log in and access their teachers and their lessons. And the special ed kids, there are a lot of areas there that haven't been built out yet, and so again, for families to make decisions without having that information is going to be difficult. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, there are no other questions right now?
Okay. Are there any for the board discussion before we have a vote on this?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, we have to submit this to the state by August 3rd, and I was just wondering if it's possible to have, you know, to have some more time to review, take into account some of the commenters' feedback, especially the teachers, because I know a lot of this information, like we know about the PPE, it's not delineated. People want to see it in writing, and some other things like the "may," and we should probably change that to "must." So I'm just wondering if that's a possibility to also give the public some more time to ask questions. I know this is not binding, and that we can make changes, but we didn't hear a lot of positivity, and that concerns me.
I also want to add on that, I agree with everything Daphna said, but the PD, which I'm not, you know, in the bottom detail of understanding, but based on some of what the staff said, of course, we need them to have the tools to be able to, you know, teach our children. So I don't know if we should be moving dates for PD, but, you know, Barry, I know you're more involved with that, and Bob, but I heard that very loud and clear, so.
Can I just ask, I'm not even sure if we'd be able to notice a meeting prior to August 3rd. So as a process question, if we were to meet again to vote, I'm not sure that's even possible. So is it possible to approve something as a tentative sort of first draft of a document that we recognize must change and will change?
Barry, you're muted.
You're muted, Barry.
You're on mute.
I say the plan will evolve. I think this is a, I think this plan should be approved and sent to the executive county superintendent. It will be modified, because conditions are going to change. The concerns that you've heard tonight, we've had, we've had these, we've had these discussions over the past, since I've been appointed in May, I've heard these discussions through May and June. We have engaged over 500 teachers, parents, and community members. We have responded to almost 500 emails. This document is not intended to have every situation, a protocol for every situation. That's not possible. I think people have to be somewhat realistic in what can be achieved with a plan that's written. We're going to be modifying this on a daily basis as we move forward. We'll modify it when we begin school in September. It's going to change dramatically once one illness occurs, if there's an illness that occurs, if there's a spike in the Princeton community, if university has a large spike or people become ill. So I think from this standpoint, the community has been engaged, teachers have had an opportunity for input. I think the opportunity for us now to refine it over the next month with their input is perfectly acceptable, but I think we should move forward, because we cannot, if we're going to wait and we're not going to have the plan into the 7th or the 10th, I mean, we can change, we can wordsmith the document. You know, I heard the comment with regard to "may," it has to be "must," and we probably should have made that, made that wordsmith comment, but it's a minor adjustment to a plan that's 97 pages long. It has the, you know, we adopted the Mercer County Health Recommendations. We've taken the CDC recommendations, the more rigid CDC recommendations, and built them into the plan. The plan is going to change, and it's going to change daily. What we approved tonight will change by next week, and I'm sure by the middle of August, you're going to have more guidance from the governor. NJAA put out a statement this morning, and their statement was to the governor, hey, you haven't put out any additional guidance since your initial reopening plan. We have parents who are saying, you shouldn't open. Well, that's the governor's choice that we're opening. I recognize the difficulty. I think the teacher who gave the example about the purchasing supplies for her classroom, I think that's a legitimate concern in the classroom. But we have to have a live option, and we have a remote option. These are things that the governor has put in his reopening plan, so we really have no option but to follow the governor's orders at the moment. We will adjust as he adjusts, and I'm sure that he's going to end up adjusting multiple times before our opening in September. So with that, you know, it's the board's decision to make, but I would, I would recommend that you approve the plan, and as I indicated to you when I sent it, that plan will be adjusted and modified. And if need be, on the 14th, we can approve, I'm sorry, on the 11th, we can approve a revised plan if necessary.
Thank you. Thank you, does any other comments? If not, yes, Michelle?
I just want to agree with Dr. Galasso, and I think that this is a really scary and uncertain time, and unfortunately, we don't have the time to be, to dot every "i" and cross every "t" as much as we would like to. And sometimes you just have to, you have to move forward and allow yourself some space to make adjustments going forward. You know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing the concern from the teachers and the employees and the parents, and I think that our staff is working as hard as they can to be receptive to that. And Betsy makes a point, we can't notice a meeting in time, we really do have to act on this now, and so again, it's a work in progress, we have to keep working on it to try to have the best plan that we can when we finally make a final decision as to whether the schools are going to open and what that's going to look like. So, you know, I'm not feeling great about this either, I don't think anybody on this board is feeling great about this either, but we know that we have to do our job.
I really appreciate the comments and the comments in the chat, and hearing from teachers, please continue to give us this input, it's so valuable, and we will continue to be listening. Thank you for it, I appreciate it.
Beth, can I make a comment?
Yes, Peter.
Thanks. First, I want to thank Dr. Galasso, you know, I can't imagine coming into a job and having this be the first thing that I had to deal with. I mean, that's- coming into a job and having this be the first thing that I had to deal with. I mean, it's it's a little difficult to, it makes my head hurt. And I want to thank you and you know, as we do in many of our meetings, in kind of this moment of gratitude to you for stepping in and picking up as if you've been here for many, many years. So I appreciate that on behalf of of all the students, the families, the staff, the administration, thank you very much. You know, the document's not perfect. We know that. There is no document in the world that's perfect. And this is something, it's, I will hope everyone appreciates that this is unprecedented, which is a word I don't like to use very much because, you know, the world has been around for a long time, but we've never had to deal with this. You know, the last time the world dealt with it was 102 years ago in a very, very different world. So I think we have to take that into account. It's, there are going to be changes. It's going to be difficult. You know, I have the same concerns and others that other people have. You know, during the meeting, I've had other people contact me and question different things, which is very welcome. And I appreciate the community caring about this and look, everybody here wants everyone to stay as safe as possible, but we have to do something. We don't have time to wait. This is our meeting, and I think we have to act on it, even if we all agree it's not perfect. You know, it will be tweaked, it will change. And I just am happy that we have Dr. Galasso to lead us through this, I'll say unprecedented times one more time. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
Wow, very official. I just echo all the other comments and for me, I think that it's important to move forward, but one thing that I'm particularly pleased to hear is that this remains a work in progress, that Barry and Bob and members of the senior administrative team, you know, have spent so much time listening and doing their absolute best to try to create a plan that reflects a wide range of challenges and preferences and concerns. And there may not be a way to perfectly optimize a plan for everyone, but I am absolutely certain that if there was, that they and the other members of the team and the working groups who've been so focused on this will do everything in their power to make reopening in whatever form it takes as good as it can possibly be for our students, for our teachers, for our staff members and for the parents. So I agree, we need to move forward and we need to also keep our minds open and keep keep adapting as we keep learning more and hearing more.
Yes, Ms. Kendall?
So I understand that we're in unprecedented times, but we're asking staff and parents to go send their children into buildings. And I don't think what they're asking is too much. There's not, first of all, we could notice an emergency meeting in 48 hours or 72 hours. Second, which is fine, I understand we want to get this submitted, but there is not a lot of hard detail in that plan. And so I understand this is unprecedented times. I speak with Dr. Galasso all the time. He's doing a tremendous job, as is Dr. Ginsberg. That doesn't take away from the fact that parents and teachers have real concerns and they want more concrete information. So what I would like to ask for is let's approve this today and let's agree that on August 14th, we will approve whatever revisions are to date. So for example, there's really no information on special education. We have no idea what that's going to look like. That's 17% of our kids. We haven't really seen how ELL is going to look. So that's what would make me comfortable in approving this. And I think, again, we don't have school if our staff doesn't want to come. We did not hear one staff member who said they're confident in, you know, our plan. Now, for me as a parent, from what I've heard and what I've known participating in meetings, I'm at this point comfortable sending my children to school. But I want everyone to have that information so that they feel comfortable making that decision. Because what one caller said is, what happens if someone gets sick? What happens if, God forbid, someone dies? We need to make sure that we did the best that we could for our community. So that's what I'm asking for. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I would just say, I support that. I'd love to affirm an updated plan at every meeting we have prior to September 14th. And, you know, we know our staff is starting September 1st. We'd have two options, two opportunities, August 11th and August 25th to see updated plans.
And that is a commitment that we've made when we submitted the initial plan to the board, that it will be continuously updated. We, you know, to speak to special education, we thought we had a plan in place, but our special education supervisors and director who have been meeting and some of our teachers and service providers who are meeting with parents, all of a sudden, there seems to be an increase in remote learning for that group of youngsters. Okay. Instead of putting a plan that didn't make sense, we want to do, then take five to seven days for them to reach out to parents, talk to them, put together a plan, and then engage the entire special education population, not only our staff, but also the moms and dads who have youngsters with special needs. So surely, that's going to be an adjustment. So the commitment is there. We're, you know, we're, we recognize that this plan is not perfect. It never probably will be perfect, but we're committed to making it the best we possibly can over the next 30 days prior to getting to school. And that includes the PD, providing teachers an opportunity to to be engaged in developing with their supervisors, standards, practices and curriculum. That's why we're extending the school year. Seven full PD days for teachers to work with supervisors and staff so the remote learning looks a little different than it did in the spring. And so, yeah, I think the entire administration is committed to that. And again, you know, the comments tonight, all well-intended, from the coaching comments to, we get it, we get it. We just wish that we could put all the pieces to this puzzle together and give it to you, but it's not possible at the moment. There are some things that are, that are just not known yet.
Thank you. Mr. Dart, Dan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, I view this as a preliminary plan. And I think on that basis, because we are technically required to submit a plan to Mercer County Superintendent of Schools, so I support it for that reason. And I totally understand and also support the need to update the plan and communicate those changes at our next two meetings. And right up to including the day that school opens. So I think the way to package this plan is a preliminary plan. And then we're going to have continuous opportunities for input by staff and parents and opportunities to update and communicate those updates as we go forward.
I'm not, I'll just say, in my career as a lawyer and as a business person, I've never seen anything evolve like this that's this complicated, this fast, with so many people providing input. And I will say, when you say you presented it to 500 people, you didn't just present, you actually asked them their questions first and had different people. And the PTOs do a very wonderful job of consolidating those questions. You've actually developed Q and As. So this kind of evolving process has been very impressive, and I know it will continue. And I just hope you guys continue to have the energy to be absorbing all of this feedback that's coming in. And, you know, none of this is optimal. We are in an emergency situation and boy, you know, I appreciate you're trying to thread the needle in multiple dimensions without having glasses. That's how it feels, just trying to get it done. So any other comments? If not, can I have a motion for approval of the preliminary plan? Dan, second?
Second.
Peter, thank you. Mr. Bolden, you want to call the roll?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Yes, Deutsch?
Yep.
Yep.
Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is item G3, Revised PPS 2021 School Calendar. It's an action item.
Can I just make one quick comment? I think this is also, this falls into the preliminary category as well. Barry and Bob have, I sent an email with some questions. They were very kind to respond in detail. For example, some of our half-day PD days may end up lining up with the days that all students are remote at a level. So just, this is also preliminary, but we need a starting point. We're changing the start date for our students, so I just want families to know that.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a motion? For the approval of the calendar, the preliminary calendar? Brian, second? Peter, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Talk ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item H, which is another public forum on items that are not related to the restart plan. So everything else. Anything agenda or non-agenda items? Again, three minutes, please identify your name and address and try to, as I say, keep it to three minutes so everyone can have a time.
Justin Matthews? Thank you. Justin Matthews, sixth grade social studies teacher. I'm assuming you can hear me. We can. Good. So I have three comments for tonight. Number one, I support the movement to change the name of JW. It isn't enough to just simply adopt a generic title under a policy put in place by a board from 15 years ago. Rename the school for someone who can be celebrated for bringing change to this community or to the world. Second comment. I just don't think we should be talking about opening schools when we're still conducting meetings over Zooms. Major League Baseball can't figure out how to keep teams on the field outside. But we're going to figure out a way to keep kids and staff safe inside of a school building. As much as I want to go back to school, it just doesn't make sense to me. And my final comment is a reaction to the recent hiring practices at Princeton Public Schools. For about the last 10 years, we've heard the district suggest that there is an approaching financial cliff. A cliff that is often easier to see when we are in a negotiations year or working without a contract. Based on the hiring this summer, I don't see how the board could possibly pretend to be nearing that cliff once again. I also don't see how they could honestly say they're looking out for the financial interests of the taxpayers of Princeton. I just want to highlight a couple of new hires for next year. We're hiring a learning consultant at the high school in Step 19, making a salary of $108,733. A Spanish teacher at the high school in Step 16, making a salary of $89,730. And hiring a math teacher at JW on Step 17, making a salary of $104,708. The math teacher at JW will walk into the building making more than all the other math teachers who have been here for years. Did these three people get credit for all their years of experience? Board Policy Number 4141 states, crediting a prior public school service shall not exceed one year for every two years of prior service. Could the three possibly have over 100 years of experience to warrant awarding them 52 steps collectively? If you really have the money to hire people and award them all their years of experience, you might want to look at the employees who have sacrificed steps for this district when that financial cliff was within view. We are about to become frontline workers during a pandemic. If you're going to start hiring people at the top of the guide, maybe you should look, take a look at our employees who gave up steps to keep us from going over that cliff. Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer Lee?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jennifer Lee and I'm a math teacher at the high school. I'm also an alumnus of PHS in Cranberry School, and I'm extremely excited to see Cecilia Burge is about to be the first Chinese-American administrator at PHS. Growing up and going through school, I rarely had any Chinese or Asian-American teachers or mentors to look up to. I was so lucky to have a colleague like Cecilia who was so eager to mentor me like she would with her students in the classroom, on the volleyball court and on the debate team. She's helped me become a more thoughtful and reflective teacher during the last three years at PHS as I am transforming from a teacher focusing on content to one focusing on my students and how my students learn. I'm so excited about her appointment and know that I will continue to learn from her as she transitions to her new role as Acting Assistant Principal at Princeton High School. In our district, we talk about equity so often, but as a Chinese-American woman, I often feel left out of the discussions of equity as the topic often talked about, sorry, as it is a topic often talked about in form of black versus white, as if we Asian-Americans don't have an impact one way or the other. I believe this appointment is a turning point. I hope and encourage the district to continue to explore different ways to be more inclusive. We are a diverse school in a diverse community, so to keep diversity strong, we need to be, we need to be and have to be color strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Tidwell?
Good evening. I just wanted to respond to the the comment regarding our hiring practices. I have to say, you know, I've worked in several districts, and this is the first district in which I've worked in, in which the district expects people who have experience and have spent years in getting educated to do a superb job and a supreme job to give up their experience for half of a salary guide based on their experience. We have committed and we have talked, I've been on several meetings now, in which I've heard the district speak to the question of our hiring practices, our need to be more diverse in our hiring practices. And this evening, we have the opportunity to actually address these exact things that we've spoken to as a school district. And so I encourage the board that we need to consider, while that clause may be in our contract, how practical is that clause when we want quality versus quantity? And what I know, being that I actually had the opportunity to interview one of the candidates, is that we're bringing in someone of quality who I believe is going to be a superb candidate here in the district to assist us in the job that we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more questions at this time.
Thank you. That will, that will take us to item I1. The policy's up for first read, and those are action items. And could I have a motion, please, for consideration? Betsy, second? Brian, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm confused because the first reads are also the second reads, so.
Because we are doing, the first reads are related to the restart plan, required policies.
Right.
And so they are being done as a first and second read tonight at one time.
Oh, okay. All right. So.
Explained by Peter Katz in the memo that circulated them earlier.
So why, maybe I just, okay, so we're going to approve them once and then twice. Okay, then I have a couple of questions. So Peter, I sent you a whole bunch of stuff. I don't know if it was all incorporated or any questions. The other thing is, when are we going to get all the he-she's changed to, you know, they? There is still a lot of that in these and.
Those, I believe, were changed. If not, we're going to be doing that holistically. I think we've discussed this in a couple of past meetings. We're going to be sending it back to NJSPA, who's going to be doing those for all of our policies. So if they're not done in here, I thought they were, if not, we're going to be changing those in all the policies school-wide. So that will be done.
I know that's going to be done. My question is when, because this is probably the fourth month that I've seen stuff. So I'm just asking, when?
No, I appreciate that. I think our plan was that the, you know, COVID kind of slowed everything down, particularly with NJSPA. I think in the fall, we're going to send it to them. I don't know what their turnaround time is going to be, but that's something we'll probably address in the next month or two.
Okay, all right. At least that's the time period. Okay.
Is there a cost for NJSPA to do that?
I don't believe so. In our conversations with her, it didn't sound like there was.
And I, you had said, right, these are being done at one time because of the emergency situation that we are.
The COVID-related ones, yes. There are a total of eight policies. Five of them are for both first and second read. Three policies are on for the second read.
I just had a quick question on the visitors. Barry had mentioned at the beginning about Election Day. If Election Day is in person, if elections happen in person, kids will be home. This policy we're about to approve, though, does say no visitors shall be permitted in schools.
We've talked about this before with elections happening in our schools and, and they go against what our policy says. We're not looking, I'm not looking to shut down elections in any way. I know schools are great, great locations for, for parking and handicap accessibility and a whole host of reasons. But we just do have to keep that in mind, that this is not in, in line with the policy that we're about to approve.
Well, the only thing, I'll, I'll, I'll make a comment about that and maybe I'm right, maybe not, but, and maybe I'm, you know, putting my lawyer hat on. But a visitor to me is somebody who is in the school when school is in session. If we're going to have, you know, I don't think a visitor is someone who's using the facility when there's no school in session. So I'm kind of maybe parsing the language, but I, that's my sense of the purpose of the policy. We're not going to have visitors in the building while students are present and learning is, is happening.
That's a, that is a good distinction.
But, but it doesn't say that. It says a visitor is anyone other than a student enrolled in or a staff member employed in that particular school. So I think we, to Betsy's point, so we're not violating our own policy, we should change that.
Or we could move the voting out of our schools like we did for the last election. It was in two firehouses in the senior place. I mean.
Barry, do you want to comment on that at all? So you, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, we're not going to have our students at risk by having visitors on Election Day. In other words, if, if election, if the election is going to be held in, in person, then we will do a total remote learning back there. So in other words, there won't be any visitors in, in the school thing. So I don't, I don't think you're violating the policy. I think I agree with Peter in his assessment of, of the term visitor. School boards, these five policies were redesigned to meet the COVID crisis by schools, which is your policy, which is your policy service that you utilize. So for the purposes that we're intending, I think it'd be appropriate to pass the policies. We can always make an adjustment to any of the policies after they're submitted to the county, executive county superintendent. After that, the board is free to look at and adjust any particular policy that it has some conflict with.
I'll, I'll also add, if you take a look at the, the policy holistically, not just at the definition of a visitor, the first piece of it talks specifically that we welcome visitors to schools by parents, board members, and others when they fit into the classroom or school routine. This, the policy by its very nature is talking about when school is in session. Maybe we could clarify that language a little bit, but I think that that is, that is clear, to me anyway, in kind of the intent of the, of the policy and what it's really talking about. I don't have any objection if we later want to clean it up, but to Dr. Galasso's point, I think it's important for us to have it now.
Are we ready to move forward? Could we have a, a roll call on this one? Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagley.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you. I two, second reading. Can we have a motion for those policies, please? Again, just five of the ones we just did and then three, three more from last time. Betsy, second. Peter, thank you. Any discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes, sorry.
Betsy Bagley.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. That brings us to the board, board committee highlights, reports. Could we hear from, I'll just run them down. Equity, please.
Um, the Equity Committee did not meet in July.
Thank you. Facilities.
We met a week ago, Monday, in that we heard from Dave Harding, which we want to thank as a committee. He's, as we heard a joke today, he spent 75% of his time working on the referendum and 75% of his time working on COVID. He has two large projects that he is dealing with. He gave us an update on our referendum projects, which are going well, although the JW project is a very large project. So he's staying very focused on that one in particular. And he also gave us an update on his, his beginning purchases on COVID and the types of projects that he's looking at as he moves forward for our potential opening.
Thank you. Can we hear from Finance? Ryan?
Sure, I'll be very brief. We got a, an update from Matt on capital leasing issuance. He reminded us that it's a five-year financing mechanism that we actually use after the fact. So once we have made our technology purchases, purchased a new school bus, which was budgeted, depending on whether or not we move forward with building controls, that could be in there. New collapsible cafeteria tables at JW, all of these will be put into the capital lease and paid for over five years. And if Matt, if I didn't get that right, please, please chime in. He updated us on a number of moving parts at the state level and the things that he's tracking. And it's really, you know, not until late August that we're going to have information that will inform, you know, where we'll know what aid we're getting and some of the, the questions of timing are answered. Matt has begun tracking on a spreadsheet costs directly associated with COVID. It's very important to do this so that we can be prepared to sign for either aid from FEMA or from the proposed state's COVID relief fund for schools. And as of the 20th, that had reached $429,000. It did not include any staff overtime or staff expenses. And he and Dr. Galasso noted that that number would, would continue to rise, although they had accelerated a lot of purchases, one or two of which will be asked to approve tonight. And Matt is also trying to closely track, which may be impossible to do, the stimulus package, which is sort of twisted up like a pretzel right now in Washington, which is very important for us to find out what sort of aid there will be for schools and what the conditions of that aid will be.
Thank you. Personnel, Debbie?
Yes, personnel did not meet the month of July.
Thank you. Policy, I think Jess, did you want to start? And then Peter, we, we want to note that Peter is going to be taking over as the chair. We thank Jess for her service. She's remaining on the committee, but Peter has agreed to step up and help shepherd policies through. So Jess, you want to go first?
Yes, and thank you to Pete, to Peter. So the Policy Committee and other board members heard on July 23rd from members of the public. 28 people spoke during the meeting, held at 8 o'clock via Zoom. This included teachers, staff, the middle school principal, alumni, parents, students, community members. And I want to express particular appreciation to historian educator Shirley Satterfield, who really provided an incredibly clear and compelling lesson about our town and its history, especially the story of Elizabeth Betsy Stockton. So just a couple of takeaways I'll share. First of all, the naming issue of the school needs to be part of a much larger process of taking action to address systemic racism. Students and parents have experienced, have experienced a great deal of pain over many years, and we need to acknowledge this. Second, with respect to policy change, the Board of Ed could consider changing the policy in the interest of naming the building for, as Mayor, former Mayor Yaina Moore suggested, a just human. And as PHS alum Jeffrey Allen and other students pointed out, to see themselves reflected, to honor those who have had positive impact in Princeton, in Princeton and on the world. There's energy, third of all, to engage students in this issue in a meaningful way, to make it a teachable moment in which they can do research and impact something real. Dr. Joy Barnes Johnson shared the idea, a beautiful idea of hallways as pathways. And this is a potentially, potentially an opportunity to continue to educate our students on an ongoing basis, maybe changing out hallway names on a regular basis to honor people who have impacted our community and the world in ways that reflect our community. And fourth, the community is capable, as we saw in this meeting, of having respectful, meaningful conversation. The board is deeply interested in community input on this topic. And we need to have a process as part of a larger approach that our, our interim superintendent mentioned tonight in terms of racial literacy and equity in fulfilling the district mission. So by way of next steps, I would suggest we can continue to connect this issue to the Comprehensive Plan on Racial Literacy and Equity. Once we have the fall rolling, that we hold an evening hearing for public input on naming. I will also note that tomorrow, Joint Effort is hosting a community forum with this as an agenda item on, on that meeting. I think as a board, we can set a process and a timeline for change, including the formation, maybe of an ad hoc committee to guide this process and move it forward. Fourth, I would suggest we ask our middle school principal, Jason Burr, to provide us a plan for engagement of middle school students on the issue and invite the university and community partners to join us in educational events for the community as we go forward. So I would suggest that the Policy Committee discuss where we are at the next policy meeting in August and then make a recommendation to the full board in August at the regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Any questions? Then next would be Student Achievement. Betsy?
Thank you. I will make this the quickest report ever. We met the day after our last meeting on Wednesday, June 24th. That seems like a lifetime ago. The meeting was open to the public and I was there along with Beth Baron, Debbie Bronfeld, Susan Cantor, and Daphne Kendall. Remote learning, we had a remote learning update as always, and the meeting focused on summer school. Annie Kosick and Mickey Christofoli shared the different offerings that are running this summer, as well as expected attendance for the programs. All summer programs are being held remotely and with synchronous or live learning in small groups. Stephanie Greenberg, Keisha Smith Carrington, and Stephanie Tidwell attended to share a revised summer reading program with our committee, as well as resources, enrichment resources that will be sent to families for enrichment over the summer. I received a question just this week about those resources and we will look into, to make sure they've been sent out to the families. But we thank Stephanie, Stephanie, and Keisha very much for their work. And finally, Joy Barnes Johnson and Jessica Baxter attended Student Achievement to discuss a racial literacy online module that they're proposing to begin this fall. They are initially thinking to open them to students, but eventually they could be made available to students, staff, parents, and other members of the community. This is currently being considered as a pilot and it was heartily supported by the committee. And we look forward to hearing more about that. We adjourned into closed session after public comment. Our next tentative meeting, we canceled our July meeting due to our administrators' efforts on restart. Our next tentative meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 19th at 2:00 PM. We will meet only as needed and we will update the PPS calendar as we have a final information about whether we are holding that meeting. So we always invite the public to attend our meetings and would certainly have an open session should we meet that day. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. And the only other committee is Negotiations. I don't think we do a public update of that.
A little bit. Just a general, yes.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Sure.
Okay, sure. So the Negotiations Committee has been working with union leadership since before the end of the school year. All of our union employee contracts expired on June 30th. The board has been careful when approaching the renewal of the contracts because we're not sure of our state aid from the state of New Jersey will be affected by the budget chart falls due to COVID. We have been in contact with the leadership of all three unions throughout the summer. And we've had face-to-face meetings with the Teachers Union and with Administrators Union. We're in the process of trying to set up a meeting with the Support Staff Union. It is the goal of the committee that all three unions be under contract before the school year begins. We are very grateful for the partnership of the union leadership and for understanding the challenges we are facing and working with us collaboratively as we seek to renew the contracts for our employees. We are committed to continue the work, to, to work towards having the three union contracts in place before the beginning of the school year, and we will keep the public informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kendall. All right. I think that takes us on to Personnel Items. And the first being Appointments. These are all consent items, so I'm going to go through them. And if you want to have a question or anything, just stop me, okay, or there's something we need to say. So Appointments. Transfers or assignments?
Is, should, just a note, I believe someone mentioned earlier about this appointment to the Acting Assistant Principal. I don't know if anyone's speaking to that at all.
Dr. Galasso did, or?
Yeah, we're very, very pleased to have Cecilia join the administrative team. Not only an outstanding teacher, but an outstanding person and a person of, who has been engaged and involved in school activity her entire career in Princeton. So to have her join us in the administrative team, we were just pleased. And we welcome her and we congratulate her.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Can I make one other point? There was a public comment regarding the salaries of some of the employees and commented that maybe the board wasn't following this policy. The policy may not have been updated, but when I reviewed this agenda with the administrative staff last Wednesday, Assistant Superintendent Volpe indicated that he was authorized by the Personnel Committee and the Policy Committee to offer one-to-one credit for hard-to-fill positions. So I wanted to make that clear, that he did not act inappropriately or out of support of the board or direction of the board. He acted within the Personnel Committee and the Policy Committee's approval. Policy Committee will be changing that, will be recommending a change to that language when we move forward and adjust the policies this fall. But I wanted to be sure that, that the public knew that Assistant Superintendent Volpe was acting directly with board direction.
Thank you. I think that takes us to item K3, Student Services. K4, Curriculum and Instruction. K5, Leave of Absence. K6, Retirements. K7, Personnel Items. K8, The Resolution to Create and Dissolve Positions. And then we get to L. L1 is the Professional Service of School Physicians. L2 is Revised Professional Consulting Services for Grand Behavior. L3, Educational Placement of Special needs Pupils. L4, Educational plus special, Placement of Special needs Pupils. L5, Competitive Contract Award of Baida Home Healthcare. And that brings us to item M1, Bills for Approval. Financial Reports. M2, Emergent Purchases Above Bid Threshold. Item M3, Grant Application. M4, Shared Service Agreements. M5, Bid Authorization Building Management System. Six, Rejection of Bid Student Transportation. Seven, Travel and Related Expenses. And then that brings us to the Consent Vote. Could I have a motion, please? Mr. Katz, second. Mr. McDonald. Mr. Bolden, you want to call a roll?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagley.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Consent Agenda passes.
That's unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to O1, Public Comment on Any Topic. If anyone would like to speak, again, three minutes. State your name and address.
I don't see anyone out there.
Okay. There's nothing else? I think that probably brings us to the end of our meeting.
Right. And I have something I want to bring up at the end.
Okay.
Great. I am proposing a resolution to the full board to remove the name of John Witherspoon from our middle school.
So you're making the motion that we would add that to the agenda? So first, I think we have to have a second on the motion to add it to the agenda at this point before we would even begin discussion? So do we have a second to that?
Well, so actually, under Robert's rules of order, she only needs a second to be talking about it. I just wanted to clarify that. Yeah.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Debbie, just to clarify, you're asking the board now to resolve to change the name. You're not suggesting a name, you're just resolving that we, we've made the decision to change the name.
To remove the name, to remove the name John Witherspoon. Yes, I am not picking the name. You know, I love what. the name. You know, I love what we did the other morning. I hope we have three more of those. I hope we bring in the alumni, you know, all the JW students, our whole community. No, I, it will take a village to come up with a name. I'm proposing a resolution that this board makes, you know, however you vote, that we want to remove the name of John Witherspoon from our middle school. Because we haven't done that yet. We've talked about changing, and I want to make a statement that we remove it.
Debbie, could you add to that motion a date like, remove the name by the end of the calendar year, or this calendar year, which would give the Policy Committee and the board and the staff an opportunity to engage the community and come up with a new name?
And I would, I would even add to it that the board commits to a process for the renaming of the school, because I think the process is critical here, and I'm not sure we're through the process yet, but I think we, I would be happy to commit to that.
So what process aren't we through? Like, we had one process, we heard from the community. Are we deciding that we are going to change the name, and then there's a second step, which is, what's that name going to be? Is that what we're saying?
Well, are we at the process that everyone, based on what has been presented to the board, is, are there any other presentations coming to the board that are part of this process prior to agreeing to remove the name?
They don't have to be. No, to remove the, all I'm asking is that, as a board, we vote to remove the name. I'm not asking for a new name from this board. I'm just saying that as a board, I feel we should make a statement that, yes, we want to change the name. We want to remove John Witherspoon from our middle school. I could say end of the year. I don't know all the detail to do that. You know, I don't know what is required through the state and everything. I just wanted to make a statement that, you know, I want to make a resolution that we are going to take.
Can we have a turn? Michelle hasn't yet spoken. Michelle, you wanted to say something?
I appreciate my colleagues' attempt to get us to act or commit to act. I struggle with this whole name change, because we can change the name or remove John Witherspoon's name from the middle school. We can't remove it from Witherspoon Street. We can't remove it from the John Witherspoon neighborhood. We can't remove it from Witherspoon Presbyterian Church. There is a history associated with why that school is named John Witherspoon Middle School. There was a school named Witherspoon School for Colored Children. So I'm not ready without hearing from a lot more people, and we heard from a lot of people at that Policy Committee meeting. But for me, if we're going to change the name, and the school still fails, the kids who are supposed to be most harmed by that name, the harm is greater than the name. The harm is in our inability to offer kids an equal opportunity to excel in our school. And so I'm really interested, and I think it was the first point that Jess brought up in terms of the comments from the Policy Committee meeting, is that any name change, whether it's a removal or whatever it is, needs to be hand in hand with making improvements of the school, in the school, for the kids, or it's an empty gesture. So that's kind of where I am now. But I, but I do appreciate your commitment to seeing that this change gets made and pushing this board to commit to moving this issue forward.
I'll just say that I, when we had, I found that the hearing the other day was, I would say, one of the highlights of my board service in three years. I found it so uplifting to hear from so many different members of the community, and often some that don't come to speak to us. And everyone was so respectful and thoughtful about what they said, and it was really great to hear from teachers and students and elders, and, you know, it was just really, for me, a very positive process. But I think that there was a clear message that people felt that there was more people who wanted to come talk to us, and they want us to have something in the evening, and they wanted to have another session. So I guess I felt like we want to hear from everyone. We said we would hear, and then we would consider. And clearly, what we've heard is a very, as Jess summarized for us, there was a very clear message. But I feel like we're still in the middle of a process that is a great one. So I, that's kind of where, I just don't quite feel ready that we should just decide something before we've kind of finished hearing from everyone. Brian?
I generally agree with that, but I just want to take a moment to acknowledge and honor, you know, what Debbie's trying to do here, which is to move us forward quickly and sort of seize the moment, if you will. And I think that it's important to respect that, and if tonight is not the time, I just hope, I don't know whether it's possible to do this, but I, I hope we can agree that when the time comes, that Debbie will be the person who can make the motion and, you know, continue to fulfill what she believes is the right thing for this board to do.
Can I ask?
I don't want to lose the chance to hear from other members of the community who I believe we still need to hear from. And also for the students, I also, I think this is a huge opportunity to have, and we had teachers speak a lot about the, you know, what could be more meaningful than the chance to really, to discuss the history of the town and their school and in our community. And so I want to make sure that, well, I do, I appreciate Debbie. I do think as a board that we, we share the sense of urgency, and also the opportunity for this to be a meaningful, a meaningful learning opportunity for kids to be part of the process with us. So I just don't want to lose that chance.
I feel like you're all missing the point here. I am not, I have, I want us to have maybe three more nights. I want us to meet with the JW students. I want us to meet with the community. What we did the other morning was great, and we need more of that. We totally need more of that. What I want to do is make a statement on where the board feels with this name. This has nothing to do with how long it's going to take us to come up with a new name. And Michelle, the town can, if they want to change Witherspoon Street, that falls under them. The school falls under us. And I feel that this is the time, and I still am going to make this resolution. You can, you know, you'll vote how you want, but I feel this is a time for us to say that, yes, we want to change the name at JW. I'm not saying what the name is, and I've never indicated that that was what this resolution was about. So I want to move forward with this, is what I really want to.
Call a question. Call a question.
Can I ask a question first of Dr. Galasso? So technically, so when we agree, when we change the name, when we do decide, what, how does it work and what happens? Do we, if we legally take a name away, do we have to have a substitute?
Well, you're going to have to have a name, because, you know, when we, when we go to the Department of Education and we say, you know, we're changing the name of John Witherspoon Middle School, they're going to say, okay, to what? You know, is it Princeton Middle School? Is it after someone else? Is it, you know, after, whatever? So there has to be something, because they just can't call it Middle School. So whenever you change the name, there's, has to be processes in place. I mean, the department has to be notified, the county superintendent has to be notified, all of our test data has to change, you know, it's all, it's all, excuse me, NJ Smart. So I mean, there are some things to do. So if you were to say, okay, we're not going to have John Witherspoon Middle School, we're going to have to give them something to, because how will they identify that institution that we run? So, you know, I think you need to, you need to think about that. So if you, if you're committing to change the name of John Witherspoon, I guess you could do it based on, we're committed to change John Witherspoon's name when, in other words, when, whenever a new name is chosen or a new title is chosen for that institution. But tomorrow, we can't say that there's no John Witherspoon Middle School, because there has to be some sort of a name. Does that make any sense?
Yes, but I think that, if I could comment, that the resolution could have a timeframe, like by the end of the year or the next six months. Or it could be open-ended, meaning we're committing to remove the name, but we're not giving a date. So the process can take place, and a new name can be developed, and so forth and so on. So I think by voting to remove the name without a timetable, you know, it's not creating any particular problem for anybody. It just says, at some future date, we will remove the name from the school. And there seemed to be unanimity around removing the name.
So can I just, how, can I just say something, Debbie? So what if, I think it would be appropriate to have Mr. Alexander here, since he's the one who started the petition, right? And we do want our students and former students to have a voice in this. So what if we invite Mr. Alexander to join us at our next meeting, and so that that way, everyone has a time, has time to look over and see what they're comfortable with? But I understand your concern about, you know, wanting to move us forward, and I just think we have to work on the wording, and I think it would be appropriate to have Mr. Alexander present.
Actually, it's Alan. Mr. Alan.
Mr. Alan, sorry. His mother's Alexander. My bad. Sorry. Mr. Alan, sorry.
Point of order, point of order. I called a question. So what happens now? That, that means it's supposed to be a vote, correct?
Yep. Yes.
Peter wanted. Well, she could withdraw it, too.
Peter, make a comment before you call the question? Yes?
About JW?
I'm not, it's not about JW. I'm not going to vote on this. It's not an issue that relates to Cranberry, so I'm going to abstain from it, but I can still just make a comment about the process and for all of you to consider. Nothing about the specifics. All the comments I agree with, but just from a process standpoint, if you vote on it tonight, what's the point of having the discussions later? I mean, if you're in the middle of the process, and you want to hear about people and why you're changing the name, if you've already decided to change the name, there's not a point to hear the public on those points.
But we haven't decided. That, that's the thing. We, we've never made a statement. We had a forum, but we never made a statement that, yes, we are going to change it.
Right, but that's my point, is that, the point is to hear from the public, so you can make a decision, and you want to have these other forums, what's the point of the forum, if, for, if you don't have, if you've already made a decision?
Right. I wonder if there's something similar that we could commit to, though, publicly this evening, because I share, Debbie, your desire to move us forward, but I think what Peter's saying is true. If we've already made the decision, no one needs to come to any meetings. They would just engage in how, what the name should be. And Michelle's absolutely right, too, that there are more, there's more we have to change than just the name. But could we commit, does anyone have an idea for augmented wording for this? Committing?
I just, I feel like we have, we could, we could affirm the process that was offered by the Policy Committee, which is very clear that we would like to have additional hearings and come to some sort of resolution of this, not in a, you know, longer timeframe and sooner. But, you know, even in this meeting tonight, when we talked about the restart, we wanted to hear from the public before we voted. It's how we work. So I feel like we've started hearing from the public, and yes, it's been a very clear message, and I have my own personal views, and I think we all do, but as a Board of Education, we're halfway into a process, or we're a good way into a process, a good process. And so for us to say, well, we're going to decide, and then we're going to continue, I agree with Peter. Logically, I just have a bit of a problem with it. Although I'm excited about the, you know, idea, and I respect Debbie, that you want to kind of just say, we're going to do it, because it's exciting. It's a, it's a good thing.
And my problem is, we got forced into the process. Like, we, as a board, weren't able to, you know, also come up with this and say, oh, you're right, this is something we should do. You know, Princeton University went and changed it, and we had all these great articles, and everyone was commenting, and this and that, and then we don't do anything. And this is where I get very frustrated. We, we're, it's, again, it's that actions, you know? It's having actions, it's having things that move forward, it's showing really where we want to be. You know, it's, it's, it's more than words, I think, is where I'm going.
Brian?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that this isn't new. This has come up before the name. It's something that Barry mentioned, you know, in May or June. I know I mentioned it in June as something that we should think about, talking about. So there's a lot of energy right now, but I don't think we had this forced on us. I think the petition sort of created a lot more energy to undertake and accelerate what I think is really a great process that the Policy Committee has outlined. The second thing is, I just think we should be cautious in referencing the university, especially when they're not here to speak for themselves. They changed the name of Woodrow Wilson. They removed the name of Woodrow Wilson on a school of public policy. They left it in other places. They are leaving the names of all of the other slaveholders, as of now, and have no process, to the best of my knowledge, of looking at those. So if we're following the university's lead, we would be leaving the Witherspoon name, and I would just suggest, this is a time for us to do what's right for us. And if we want to get university folks to come talk with us, as the Policy Committee suggested, I really embrace that. But we can't say that we're doing this because the university did something which, in fact, was very different.
Okay. What I meant was, our world is doing things. I was using an example because they're in town here, and it was a big statement. It was in the New York Times. That's what I'm saying. You sent a couple articles about it. So I'm using it as an example that there is a movement, and there's things to do, and I guess I want to get out there and say, yes, I believe this name should be gone, and I want, and I want to put my actions on it and vote for something to show the public where we're going. And a deliverable, an action. So if I used the university incorrectly, I was using it as an example of change that is happening. That's where I'm going. I want to do change.
Well, at this point, could, you know, could we resolve to enthusiastically engage in the process for renaming the middle school? And that would still show, it would be a public statement on behalf of the board, but it would also show the community, we're in the midst of this process, and we want to hear from them.
Michelle?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had the floor. I was recognized. I moved, called the question. The appropriate thing for you to do is ask if there is a second.
Is there a second?
For my motion.
Is there a second, Mr. McDonald? Yes.
Thank you. Can we vote? Can we end debate? Now we can vote.
Are we voting on now?
Ms. Bronfeld has a motion, and it's been seconded. We've talked about it. Now we can vote.
The motion, because that was a little.
We were just trying.
Well, we're voting on whether to close debate. That's what we're voting on, to stop talking about it and vote.
We're voting on it to close debate, and then are we going to vote on the motion separately?
Yeah, you're voting to close debate.
Okay, we're voting all those in favor of closing debate on this issue.
I understand what the wording in the resolution is that we're voting on.
Well, what I moved was to, I called the question, and that means I want to stop talking about it, so we can vote on it. So I moved that. I got recognized. Chair asked for a second. Somebody agreed with me. Now we vote on whether or not we can stop talking about it. Then once we vote, and we're going to stop talking about it, then we vote on the motion. If that fails, and people want to continue talking about it, then we keep talking about it.
Thank you.
Under Robert's Rules of Orders, Michelle's resolution takes precedence over Debbie's resolution.
Well, we do that first, yes. So let's vote on, now, are we stopped talking about this? Are we, all those in favor of closing the debate? Okay? Six?
Okay, yeah.
All right, so debate is now closed?
Now just vote.
We vote on the motion, and can we restate the motion? The motion was made to agree to change the name of John Witherspoon. Did we, is that the?
Remove the name.
Remove the name.
John Witherspoon from, from the middle.
Our middle school.
All right. So are we going to call a?
Is everyone clear on that? We can't discuss this further, so this will either be approved or denied, or rejected, and then we could, if, depending. And then we could, if, depending on what happens, we could call another motion to discuss further. Or are we?
Somebody could introduce something else.
Okay.
All right, so the resolution that I am proposing is for the board to remove the name of John Witherspoon from our middle school.
But then what? So how? Like, what's going to happen then? Like, I mean, they make the points about.
Question about it, I'm sorry to interrupt, that was the whole motion we just had, was to stop talking about it. You have to vote on it?
Yeah, can't talk about it, that's it. If you don't get it or it's not clear to you, vote against it.
All right, so I'm proposing a resolution to the board to remove the name of John Witherspoon from the middle school and to continue speaking to the community on a new name.
Okay, all those in favor? Should we have Matt do a roll call vote? Do a roll call vote, Matt?
Beth Baron?
No.
That's you, Baglio?
No.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
No.
Susan Cantor?
No.
Daphne Kendall?
Abstained.
Brian McDonald?
No.
Michelle Talkponder?
No.
Peter abstains by policy, board policy, so six to two, motion fails.
I'd like to introduce, I don't even know when I'm introducing it, but I don't want to leave this vote here because I don't believe that this is where this board actually feels. I believe we're stuck in the process and not the outcome. My vote no was because I'm not sure what we would do tomorrow without a name. And we haven't come to the end of the process to be able to have a new name for that school. So I would like to make, I don't even know what motion I'd like to make, but I'd like us to make a public statement in support of, Jess, you haven't.
I would like to say, could we continue the process that we've already initiated by the last policy meeting and connect this work to the issue, to the Comprehensive Plan on Racial Literacy and Equity?
Yes, yes, do we want to just show that we have?
At the next policy committee, we can make a recommendation to the board based on where we are at that point.
When is the meeting, the next meeting with the public set?
We need to set that.
So will that be before or after the policy committee meeting?
I would suggest that to give our educators time to come and speak to us about a process, it would be September.
Why do we need the educators? Why don't we first at least, I thought we were going to have a night meeting to get, you know, the community? Because so many people couldn't come to the morning one.
Yeah, we want to do an evening meeting. Could we?
We can take it up at the next Equity Committee meeting if you would like, because we're already scheduled.
When is that, Michelle?
It's at 7:00 PM August.
Yeah, yeah.
Wonder, that would be great.
I think I'd like to publicly resolve that we are committed to this work.
Yes, I think we're all committed to this work.
And is that a way that we can do that this evening?
Brian?
Well, we can each make a comment for the record, that's something we can do in this section. Or we can make a resolution. You know, I'll just start with the personal comment that I do not feel that the name John Witherspoon on the school reflects our mission and values and that it is, as a symbol, not the right symbol, to nurture the hopes, dreams, and aspirations of our students today and tomorrow. And that I strongly endorse the process that the policy committee proposed to carefully consider the name over the next couple months and to the full extent possible, engage the community in this very important matter.
Thank you.
And I would weigh in as well and say I agree. If one student, staff member, family member, community member feels uncomfortable entering a school with that name, that should not be the name of our middle school. So I am fully committed to this work as well and look forward to engaging the board, the administrators, students, and members of the community.
And I am grateful to my colleagues for this opportunity, that fact that I do believe we are all in agreement on the direction we're going here, and it's such a good thing, and it's such a positive thing. And I'm grateful that we're going to take the time and even get more of our community engaged as we have started. And I think we're going to come to a good place, and it will be much better for our students and staff and district. It's a positive thing, so thank you. And thank you, Debbie, for bringing this up, and I'm sorry that we're caught up in our process that this is not moving where you want it as quickly as you wanted it to. But I honor your.
Quickness, it's not the quickness, it was making a statement that we stand behind some of the work we say we're doing, that's it. It has nothing to do with doing anything quick.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone wants to say? No, if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So Dave?
Brian, second? Jess, all in favor?
All right.
Thanks, everyone.